Good morning. I'd like to call to order this committee of the whole meeting of the Sunshine Coast Regional District Board at 9:30. That's probably mine. Just a minute here. Leave computer audio. At 9:30, and acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is located in the territories of the Sheeshalh and the Skahomish Nations. And for this meeting, I'm coordinating the passing of the torch to Vice Chair Justine Gabius to run this meeting, so.
Well, thank you, Director White. Without further ado, we do have an amended agenda before us. Would directors like to make any amendments to the agenda? If not, I will be looking for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved, seconded. All in favor? And that carries. I would also like a motion to receive all delegation materials and reports. Moved, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? That carries. All right. So moving on to item three on the agenda. We do have a presentation on Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Update and Floor Plans for the New Training Center. And joining us today are Stuart Frizzell, President of the Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Society, as well as Darnetel Seegers, Vice President, and Rick Hopper, Director of Operations Coastal Sports and Entertainment Group. When you're ready, and please make sure you speak close to the mic so that everybody can hear you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Board, for having us here. We would like to give you an update. We haven't been in front of you for quite a few months now, and it's been an act of quite a few months, so we wanted to make sure that you're brought up to speed on where we're at right now. So since May the 11th, there have been a number of things that have gone on. On August 1st, as you hopefully heard, and maybe some of you were there with us, we were announced the awarding of a junior hockey franchise from the PGA HL for the Sunshine Coast. So first time ever. It was a great time to celebrate and very happy to be able to announce that. Since then, the coach and general manager position has been posted and awarded. Local boy grew up on the coast, went on to be a pro hockey player, and now has been hired as the first coach and general manager of junior hockey franchise on the coast. And we also, and Rick may be able to speak more to this if there are questions. There's a director of player personnel has been announced, and the group has been out actively seeking players for the team, which is going to be pretty important. The team name, there was a name the team contest that went out, which was very well responded to by the public and engaged a lot of people. A lot of fantastic creative ideas came forward as we expected from the Sunshine Coast. A name has been chosen. There is a logo and colors, jersey that will be revealed on December 2nd when we host the Connects Alumni Team is coming up to the coast, and we have got almost packed house. There are a few tickets left, but not very many. So if you plan to attend, get your tickets now. With regards to the training facility that we will be building directly south of the Gibsons Area Community Center, we did post a request for proposals to hire a construction manager and had, again, had very good response to that. And we have engaged Caris Construction as our construction manager for the project. The architectural work has gone with the sub-disciplines have close to completed the design work, and the application for the building permit is submitted, along with hydro, Fortis, and Talus, and all the other pieces are underway. We did do some extra work to support geotech assessment, and so we have begun the process of getting that training center built. The license of occupation at the Town of Gibsons is proceeding towards...
Close.
Close. It's proceeding forward. And we have, in the slide, a groundbreaking to be held on December 2nd. That actually will be, we're not going to go ahead with that on December 2nd. That's going to be a little bit delayed. So that is, that's one change we're here to announce today, that we won't be doing a groundbreaking ceremony on December 2nd. The game will go on, though. The game will go on. So as part of the design process, we've been engaging with the staff at the Regional District Recreation Staff in the design process, and with a particular look towards making sure that what we build is going to be gender inclusive and is going to be a welcome and safe space for everyone to use well into the future. And this is a rendering of the space, the training center off the south side of the existing facility, between where the rec center is, between the ice arena and the existing Ryan Dempster Field. This is our floor plan. As you can see, there is a change room for the home team and one for the visiting team as well, as well as a room for doing off-ice training, and a medical treatment room, and equipment.
So this is divided.
Yeah, this is the left, the left west side of the building with a little more detail showing you the home team dressing room. There's some administrative office space to do the business of the team, and an equipment room that will, to deal with equipment, and a training room for the physical therapist. On the other side, we have a little small conference room space which will be available for meetings for small, you know, there's a multitude of nonprofit groups running different types of programs, so we'll make that available for them. Visitor dressing room. This space will also provide great support for events that happen in the arena space, making use of this adjacent extra space for staging and, you know, of course, dressing rooms for if it was a sporting activity or additional space to stage for performances, et cetera. So, next steps. We have put forward a timeline for upgrades inside the building, and that is actually will be a primary focus for us moving forward here, is to make sure that we have those upgrades to the inside of the building done in time for the first puck drop in September, to make sure that the community has the best experience and optimize the building to host that level of an event. There's an advertising agreement that has been put forward, which will, I'm sure, be coming to the board in the coming months here. And we are looking to put together an agreement which will facilitate being able to accept donations and issue charitable receipts for those donations.
That's it? That's all?
Is there any questions from the Board?
Thank you very much for this great presentation. President Frizzell, I got corrected. Apologies for mispronouncing your name. Just a reminder for directors that there is a staff report coming on the heels of this, but do you have any questions for the delegation? Director Inster.
Thank you. It's good to see the advanced drawings here that you presented, just as I kind of predicted the facility would look, in a sense. Good to see the large training room. You look at the facility that, as it stands now, the GAC and then the ball field, there's a hill between the two. So I'm assuming you're just, you're having to cut into the hill or something like that in order to do what you're doing for the facility? It's not, it seems like the hill comes down quickly, so, yeah.
Yeah, there's a bit of a grade change there. And between the floor level of the training facility and the level of the ball field, what's been incorporated into the design is what they call stadium seating, so that it will be stepped up there, which will provide extra viewing for the baseball field as well. So that's part of how we've taken advantage of that elevation change.
Thank you for that answer. Director Bax.
Yeah, a question about other uses of the facility. I know that there's trade shows that go on at the GAC, and I imagine, you mentioned something about performances. And I was wondering if there's a, is there an off-season where these, the facilities that you're building are not going to be used and can be perhaps rented out to other users, like the home show for backstage uses? Or should, you know, I remember when I was a young man, we used to go to the hockey rink and watch bands like April Wine play. And they need kind of backstage stuff if we're going to bring in that type of thing. Are these facilities going to be available for that use?
Thanks for the question. Absolutely. Anytime that that is not being actively used, you know, by the junior team, it's going to be available to support other community activities. And certainly, you know, I'm seeing little figure skaters putting on their costumes before they put a performance on, or, you know, a music performance. That big room will definitely be able to support that type of activity, yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions for the delegation? Seeing no hands, thank you very much for coming today. Excellent.
Thanks for having us.
Of course. Okay, so moving right along.
I thought I got some hockey questions.
Okay, so moving on to staff report, Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Update. That is annex C pages 62 to 70. We have General Manager of Community Services, Jim Ganyan. Would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by thanking our delegation for coming today, but probably more so for all the time and effort that they have been putting in over the past several months, along with other members of the community to bring this vision to life. It's getting exciting. As our conversations and our planning has progressed, we've been able to identify potential impacts to the SCRD and have responded as best we can, given our current capacity. As we learn more, we continue to bring forward reports to the Board so that we can keep you updated. The focus over the past several months has been on the new training center and on the various agreements that need to be either amended or created in order to support this initiative. And we bring forward to you today an update with a few recommendations. First of all, at our last staff report, we recognized an oversight in not bringing forward a non-prime ice time rate for the junior group. Providing a non-prime time ice rate, I have to slowly say that, would be consistent with our bylaw and other facility rental rates, and therefore, we brought this forward for the committee's consideration today. Over the past few months, we have gathered our ice rental requests from our user groups for the upcoming 2024 winter and spring season. And ice rental requests submitted by the Coastal Sport and Entertainment Group reflect to their business plan and their proposed programming, which is a key contributor to their overall sustainability. These developmental camps for youth, ID camps for players, and season of play for the team will require ice to be installed earlier in the season and left in longer, extending the overall ice season at the GAC to 42 weeks, which is an increase of 10 weeks. An extended ice season is also heavily supported by other user groups, which will come as no surprise to many of you sitting around the table, and it will better service their training and competition schedules. Staff are recommending that a budget proposal to align our budgets with the 42-week ice season be brought forward to the upcoming budget deliberations. We will recognize additional revenues for these ice rentals, but there are also expenditures that go alongside of that, and we will bring that forward in our budget deliberations. We are also awaiting an amended agreement from the Town of Gibsons for our footprint for the GAC. And once that's executed, we can continue to work with the Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Society on the agreement that will be required for the ultimate construction of their training center. And then, we're going to turn our focus to planning and the timing for these proposed enhancements, which will include things like moving the players' benches, replacing bleacher seating with bucket seating, lighting, sound upgrades, media platform, to name a few. So what is apparent is that these initiatives have been and will continue to be with increasing intensity as the timelines become shorter and shorter. It will require staff support and oversight, and with that in mind, we will also be bringing forward a budget proposal for one-time project leadership for the Board's consideration during deliberations. Bringing junior hockey to the coast, as you have heard from our delegation and as well in the staff report, is a major undertaking and requires the efforts of multiple parties. And as we continue to work through the planning, we will be back in front of the Board with updates as they arise. And with that, staff are available to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, GM Ganyan. And let me pull my Zoom here. Director McMahon.
Sure. Thank you for the report. I'm not 100% comfortable with setting our rates before we know what our costs are, because that's not usually the way I do my household budgeting, but I recognize that we're on very tight timelines. I did notice, however, that in the, in the report of May 11th, the recommendations were to increase the amount annually by 5%. But in this report, it's an annual increase of up to 5%. Is there a reason for the difference?
Thank you, through the Chair. No, probably just a language, but the intent would be that the agreement would be the 5% consistent with their prime rate. Thank you.
Director Stamford.
Thank you, Chair. On page 65, you've noted, and you touched on it briefly, that there's a significant amount of time to support this initiative, and it's delayed other priorities. I'm wondering if there is any quantifiable data to demonstrate the hours and impact on other projects, or if that's something that we'll be looking at later.
Thank you for the question, Chair. Until just recently, we have not been tracking that, but staff have started to track that on our timesheet. But in terms of how this is delaying other projects, we don't have any quantifiable data on that. What we do know is that we need to work through the timelines. As the delegation mentioned, they have submitted just recently some timelines that we need to really sit back and focus on in January. We have some significant upgrades happening to the GAC, including some plant upgrades. And so we're going to have to really work through the detail, probably on a week-by-week GAC chart in terms of what's going on in the facility, making sure that those projects align with the projects that we're doing in terms of timing. So, and we haven't gotten to any of that level of detail yet. So really, that's when the rubber's going to hit the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Ganyan. I've got Director Inster and then McMahon.
Thank you. I think that the ice rates that we're hearing now are probably as much reflective of the junior hockey team proposal and their budget pieces as much as it is what we need to do at the Regional District. So I think it's meeting their, what they have to do in terms of their financial diligence and budget challenges that you have when you start a hockey team such as this. You need to have it negotiate as low as possible to make things work originally. So it's something we need to keep in mind. I just wanted to also, Chair, thank staff for their focus and diligence on this. I think it's important for the Board to know that most communities our size in British Columbia have or are hosting junior hockey franchises, whether it be A, B, or major juniors. So it's something that seems, it seems very Canadian, and I'm glad to see that we're, as a community, in a sense, evolving to that piece. And I will say to those people that aren't necessarily hockey players or fans, that once you go into this area of hosting and creating these franchises like this, you then start to consider soccer franchises coming to the coast once we finally get it together and build a turf field. So this is about the evolution of sport and culture on our Sunshine Coast. So I'm glad this group stepped forward, and I look forward to those other developments in our local sports scene that come with local government support. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Director McMahon.
Yes, thank you, Director Inster, for threatening us with upgrades to our sports fields for another few million dollars. My question is, on page 137 of this agenda, we have a report on corporate GHG emissions and how we're going to lower them. So I'm interested in what the impact of the extended ice time and the new buildings are going to have on our GHG emissions, and have we taken any opportunities to lower them? For instance, is the training facility heated by heat pumps, or is it more natural gas?
Would staff like to answer?
Thank you for the question. I can't speak to the new training center because it's not our facility. But I will suggest that as we have, over the past year, known that junior hockey was on its way, and we're building the plane as we're flying it, we have had that in mind as we've looked at the capital replacements that we require for the GAC, sorry, Gibsons Area Community Center. And as you are aware, we have a chiller and condenser replacement in 2024, 2025. And so we have looked at that equipment with an extended season in mind, and looked at environmentally friendly equipment. And I know that our manager facilities can speak to that a little bit later when that comes up. But that has been first and foremost in our thinking as well. So I don't know what the impact will be. We'll have to look at our emissions, but it is first and foremost on our mind. Thank you.
Follow-up?
Yes, the training facility will be, whose corporate emissions will those be? Will that be the Town of Gibsons?
Would staff like to?
Thank you. I actually can't answer that question. All I can suggest is that it is not our building. It's not an SCRD building. It's independently owned by the coast and, or by the Sunshine Coast Junior Hockey Society, under an occupation for, a license of occupation with the Town of Gibsons. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Stamford.
Thank you. It's good to hear from Director Inster that this will also bring cultural investment to the Sunshine Coast. So I'd like to see how that impacts it, because there's more than sports for youth here, and we need to support that, too. A query, just a clarification, we mentioned the non-prime time hourly rate. I just want to make sure that is standard for all users. It's not just for the hockey team. That's the rate for other users as well. Is that correct? Through the Chair.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the question. You are correct. We consistently offer a non-prime ice time rate. Thank you.
Director White.
Director McMahon.
Thank you. I believe that we are going to be looking at our fees and charges across recreation sometime soon. Of course, I appreciate that junior hockey needs to sign an agreement, guaranteeing them certain rates, but I was just wondering what the timeline is on reviewing our general fees and charges. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. A general review, systemic review of our fees and charges is not on the work plan in the upcoming year.
Director White.
I also echo some of the directors who've spoken in appreciation of all the work that staff has done on this. I really, this is a great report that covers all the concerns and important issues that I would have, as well as, the town is also working hard on this as well. And note taken about the emissions. I appreciate Director McMahon bringing that up, because that's something we will...
we'll discuss further at the town. So I'd like to move the recommendations on page 62.
And there's a secondor, Director Toss. Any more discussion? Director McMahon.
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment that the, in item four, say, an annual increase of 5% to make it consistent with the other agreement that we already made.
Do we need a secondor? Secondor? Director Stamford? Okay. So first, we vote on the amendment. Okay. And that'll be voting B, D, E, F, Seashell Gibsons and Sheeshal Nation Government District. Any more discussion? Voting on the amendment to the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Mike Harys. Would you like your opposition recorded? Director Inkster? Yes. Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? All right. We already have a mover and a secondor, so we'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Mike Harys. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five on the agenda, Free Transit for Youth Review. That is Annex E, pages 74 to 136. We have the Manager of Transit and Fleet and the General Manager of Community Services here. Manager Kidwai, would you like to introduce this for us?
Thank you. Good morning. This report provided today is in response to the board's direction to the staff to review the feasibility of the free public transit for youth. While considering a program like this, free transit to youth, it is important to also consider the program intended outcomes. Will free transit for youth increase the ridership, encourage a regular transit user in the future, eliminate a financial barrier for using transit, and also contributing to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions? It is clear from the report and the engagement conducted that the youth would like free transit. However, it's not very clear if providing free transit would achieve all the intended outcomes stated earlier. As per our agreement with BC Transit, SCRD retains all the fair revenues to contribute to the share of operating cost. It is estimated that offering free transit for youth in the revenue will result in a revenue loss of $90,000 a year, which needs to be offset by taxation. The board will need to consider how this new project fits within their strategic plan and corporate priorities. Balancing the objectives of the Free Transit for Youth program and with the other essential services and expansion priorities may be a delicate task, and some other priorities may be impacted. To gain a clearer understanding of the cumulative impact of the current corporate and transit priorities, the staff recommends that the board defer a decision on free transit for youth to 2024-28 financial plan budget deliberations. This decision could then be considered, among with the other corporate priorities and budget proposals. Staff are here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Kidwai, for this report. I have some questions. Director White.
I have some questions, direct precisely about that, that piece about how, how fair revenues are, come into us and are, are part of our share of transit as compared to the provincial share of BC Transit in paying for the, the service. What happens when, recently, a couple years ago, when students 12 and under were given free ridership by the province? Like, that would cut into our affairs, but the province made that decision, and it seemed like they were covering it. And yet, I, I'm just, my, I can't figure out what happened there, so I hope, I'm wondering.
Jim Gagnon?
I can be enlightened.
Could you enlighten Director White, please?
Thank you, and through the chair, you are correct. The provincial government actually embedded a revenue, like an additional revenue for us to offset our potential loss. So they did some calculations across the province, because they brought this in across the province, and all agreements with the province received funding to compensate for that loss of revenue. And that's embedded in our base annual operating agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Director McMahon.
Yes, my, my biggest concern about this is that we have no data, and so we have no way to measure the success or failure of the program, because we don't know how many youth are using the transit now. With the implementation of UMO, which has been on the horizon imminently for months, is there any opportunity to gather better data? Or is there any way for us to determine whether, well, you can kind of tell whether somebody is a youth or a senior, but our data doesn't show that.
At, at this, thank you for the question, and through the chair. At this time, we do not have a, a exception to the discounted fare built within the UMO electronic fare collection system that is coming in January. However, we are in conversation with the project leader of BC Transit for this particular UMO project, and they are, begin to work on this particular, for the discounted fare. There are two of them. One is for free transit for youth, that they are beginning to see that, but, and, and they will continue to work on it, and they will let us know. So at, at this time, it's being done.
Thank you. Director Bax.
I have two questions. One is, when was the fare pegged to $2? When was that change made? Do you know what year that was? And my other question has to do, do with that, deal with that as well. If I could get an answer on that, I've got the inflation calculator open. There's more than just taxation that can make up for some of the lost revenue. We could also raise fares for people that are still paying. If, example, let's say 2010 was the last time that we raised the fares, it would be, according to, it should be $2.70 now. I don't know what year it was raised to $2, but if we raise it a quarter, we'll recoup a lot of money.
We have point of information?
I have a point of information. My, my recollection is that they were actually decreased from 225 to $2, so I just wanted to verify that. And I think that was about 2015.
2015, so.
I was on the board. I know that much, so it would have been around that time.
Anyway, I'm just, the point is that there's more than just taxation to offset this cost.
Jim Gagnon, did you want to add to this?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to add to it. I'm, I know our, our corporate officer is, is quickly trying to see the last time we updated the bylaw, but it predates me, it predates COVID, so it's, I'm thinking it's around Director White's timeline. However, I, I want to remind the board that we have signed an agreement with BC Transit Now since COVID to receive COVID restart funding, which bound us to no fee increases until at least 2025. So we do not have the ability to raise our fee in order to compensate for this. And raising a fee is kind of a roundabout way of, I mean, the taxpayer that takes the bus ends up paying, paying that anyway. So however, it's user pay versus taxation in general. But we cannot up our fees until at least 2025. Thank you.
Very good information. We haven't heard from Director Stamford yet. Would you like to go next?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. It's very interesting. As a transit user, I did see a lot of focus on the challenge between potentially providing free transit to youth versus increasing the service. And I think they are not mutually exclusive. I really understood the detail around the weekend service for teenagers. Even in an area where I use the transit, which is the best transit service we get, it's almost untenable on a weekends. It, it's, we, we can't operate over the weekend on, on the transit with a teenager. Just getting back and forth, it just doesn't work anymore. So I think it's a really good question for the, the board to be looking at over budget is what would be the greatest benefit to young people? Better service or free service? And that's sort of how that report was couched. So it's more of a question about, we need that discussion. It's important. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Stamford. Director White.
I'm glad Director Stamford raised that, because that's been at the forefront of my mind, too, and especially reading the report from the direct, the direct feedback from the students. And I, I'm sure we all felt the same way reading this report, but I want, I'll, I'll take the opportunity to be the first to acknowledge that that was an outstanding report, like really, really great work and great work in engaging the students. And I'd want to thank Anna for her, her work in doing that and her collaboration with our students on the coast. And, and I appreciate it, too, how, how well that was integrated into the staff report, too. I could see that it was very useful to, to staff. Lot of interesting feedback came through in that report. Yeah, one that definitely came, came strongly to me and also came in, in previous meetings of, of the group that was started in Gibsons with Anna and the students is that the frequency is really a huge concern, and I, I would not want to be in a position in the budget to be saying, let's, let's sacrifice funding that we could put towards increasing the frequency for fares when there's still all these questions about it. So it's, it's a tricky balance. And I think, I think the report, especially the feedback directly from the students, makes it, makes it even more difficult, because they can see that balance, too. I have a, another question about our budget, though, and I'm, and I'm thinking somewhat along the lines of Director McMahon about trying to, trying to get more evidence. And in the past, there was talk about trying to do a, a pilot project. I know that's what I can see in, in some of the work, that a lot, that's how a lot of the other communities started, that, that now have transit. And just leading to that, I'm wondering how, how we handle fluctuations in, in fares right now? Do we have, I mean, do we need to collect an ample reserve in order to kind of handle the unpredictability? Because we, we've seen really high unpredictability in the last few years, especially where, where ridership went down, now it's coming back up again. And I do know, I recall being a director at one point, at least one point, where we've had to unfortunately come up with mid-year injections of the, into the transit budget to, to compensate for that. So I know that that's, that's something that happens, unfortunately. But how do we handle the fluctuations? Because I guess my thinking on this is, if we did do a pilot for, for the matter of a couple months or so, like, I mean, how would, would we possibly have some funds to temporarily address that, or would it, would it just be too, too unpredictable?
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for the question. I'm going to make initial comment on it, and then maybe I'll ask our general manager to, to supplement that. Our ridership, you mentioned that, yeah, it were, because of the COVID effect, it was down quite a bit, but I think this year is coming, coming back to 2019 levels. So, so far, we are, on the first quarter, we were 102%, but we have dropped a little bit, but overall, we are, we are at par. So that would be, that, 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 for the ridership. Going forward on this one, once we have the UMO app identifies this particular fare, then we would definitely be able to, to chart what kind of usage we are providing to our youth and how we're going to do that. So, but that has to be determined by the, by the UMO project fare, and then, then we can definitely track it. At this time, unfortunately, we do not have any, any, any method of doing so, except the one that we, we already have in, in place by, in there. So, Charlie.
Jim Gagnon, would you like to add to that?
Thank you. Yes, Chair, just a, a couple of things perhaps to note is, the way our current fee structure is, youth and senior pay the same fee. So even with UMO, they will still pay the same fee, so that data will be very difficult. It's only if we make a change to bring in free transit for youth, where we're actually going to create a different type of pass, will we be able to distinguish between our youth ridership and our senior ridership, because that's a blended rate. It's the same rate. So there are challenges with that. So we are working with BC Transit to see if there's some way that we can, can try and distinguish between those, but it's still in the works. To pilot a project, yes, other organizations have definitely looked at this as a pilot, and that is something that, that could be considered. I just want to suggest that oftentimes, when you pilot something, it's very challenging to unpilot it at the very end of the day. It becomes a habit and something that, that folks are used to. So there is, there are some challenges with it, but piling it, it would at least allow us to have some time to get data, and I certainly wouldn't suggest piloting it for a couple of weeks, even a couple of months. I would suggest probably a couple of years in order for us to get the system in place, get the data rolling, and to actually see the ridership. Most of the research that Ms. Latanza did showed that it did take time in lots of cases to see that ridership go up. Sometimes there was immediate spike, but it's not, you know, it's going to be something that grows over time. So hopefully that answered your question. Director White, thank you.
Thank you, Jim Gagnon. Director McMahon.
Yes, and echoing Director White's comments, this was a very good report, but from reading the information, it seems clear to me that the, the question is not getting to school. The question for the students is more evenings, weekends, having the freedom of some transportation choices on, on the coast. I would, you know, I would be a nasty old person and say, you should all ride your bike, except that it's not safe on, on our roads. It simply isn't. So my question was, is, is there any way that we could make transit free for youth during non-peak hours?
Would staff like to give it a shot? Yes. Manager Kidwai.
Thank you, through the chair. At, at this time, due to the, the way our fare has been structured, I think we can, at this time would be a little bit challenging to do, but certainly we can look into it and we can make sure that, that is done, if that is the direction from the, from the board.
Director Bax.
I have a question. What is the youth fare at the moment?
I believe the fare is same as $2, but the passes are $30.
Okay. And if we were to change that fare from the, the seniors' fare, would the UMO system be able to track that information for us?
Manager Kidwai?
Example, if we lower the fare from $2 to $1, would we be able to track the information and be able to separate that information from the seniors?
Thank you for the question, through the chair. I believe it, it's doable, but I will be in a better position to give you an answer of yes and no after speaking to the, to the project leader who are designing these fare. But from my conversation with them, that is, that should not be a, a sort of a, a bigger programming challenge as compared to creating the other one. So that would be one of the things we can discuss.
And then, and in that case, the losses that you're projecting at 90,000 would be halved to 45,000. Should they, should we create a student fare at $1?
If that's the direction of the board, we could certainly look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Gagnon?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to follow up. The, the fare for getting on the bus is $2 for everybody. It doesn't matter whether senior, youth, adult. It's the monthly pass that is a reduced rate for seniors and youth. So if the board wants to look at a reduced rate for youth, it would be that, I would, we would strongly encourage the pass, because the day rate of hopping on the bus and paying just one chit to get on the bus is $2 for everybody. There is no discount around that day rate. Thank you. Thank you.
Follow up, Director Bax.
Yeah, so that if we change the the rate of the monthly pass, we could we could track the information more readily? Yes?
That sounds correct to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I will confirm what I what, yes, what we are trying to do is we need to work with UMO to figure out how to track youth. And so we are doing that regardless of the pilot or the the project. We're trying to work through that, but it's very difficult for us to give you assurances right now because we actually don't have UMO started. So until we actually get that, we're still working in this, we think, zone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director White.
I don't know if I have a lot to add to that because that's where I was going, too. Like, we we really need to get those those two discount rates distinct separated so we can distinguish here and be able to track. And tracking seniors' use of 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 a transit is also important. Having them lumped together is not not helpful at all. So I I appreciate staffs looking at that. And I I feel like, I mean, when UMO is implemented, like, is it January 2024 now? Because, yeah, it said a different date in the report, but that's what I assumed. So like, when it's implemented, could is there any hope that that we might have those split up in some way? And if the board needs to change the fare in order to do it, I think, I mean, if we change it to 30 to 20, I mean, let's do it.
Yeah. Manager Kidway.
Thank you for the question through the chair. Yes, the tentative, the most recent date for implementation, which looks very promising, is the second week of January. We are getting our installation devices going to be installed in next week. So it looks that it's a go date, second week of January, starting from 8.
Oh, Jim Gangi, yes.
Thank you, Chair. I think staff clearly hear from the board that you want to try and distinguish between rates. And so what I might suggest is if it can't be done through UMO, then staff would be tasked with thing finding a way that it could be and coming back to the board with our recommendation. Thank you.
Follow up, Director White.
Do we need board direction on that?
Thank you, Chair. It's always good to have board direction. So, yes, if you want to make that a resolution, that staff work towards distinguish distinguishing between the youth and the seniors, so rate or tracking so that we can track the usage by those two different demographics, and then come forward with any recommendation that might need to be made in order to do so, that would be great. Thank you.
So moved, what she said.
And seconded? All right. Director McMahon. I guess we should, should we vote on this addition first?
Well, the the, yes. I'm speaking to the subject of distinguishing fares. This is not a unique problem. Like, other jurisdictions across the province must be grappling with this, too, as as evidenced by many different attempts at free fares or reduced fares for youth. So there may be a role for the board here in advocating at the provincial level for BC Transit to do something. Not sure what, but we know what we need. Darn. Yeah, I think I'll stop there right now. Thank you.
Director Stanford.
Would it be okay if we had the motion read out? Because I'm never sure what we're voting on if I I don't hear it.
Thank you, Chair. Let staff provide an option to distinguishing fares between the youth and seniors' rates and tracking mechanisms for this.
Sounds good. Director McMahon.
The the question is distinguishing between youth and senior ridership, I think. It's not the fares that are the key here. It's how many people are riding the transit, is my suggestion.
Direct acceptable. Director Bax.
As Director White spoke of earlier, I think it would be a good idea to distinguish between the rates by lowering the, it's, I think it would be a great compromise for us to lower the rates for the student bus passes to a place where we can, if we lower it to $20, then we can track that easily. It's the 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 information will be will separate itself. And then instead of the $90,000 projected loss, it would come down to $30,000, which is a pretty easy to to swallow. But I just want to, I wanted to know when would be the first opportunity for us to create that motion?
Are you speaking to the motion?
I know, I'm just asking. Well, I know there's a motion on the floor. I'm deciding whether to vote for it or not.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Director Stanford, is this a residual hand? I believe it is. Yes? Okay. So are we voting on the amendment to the motion first or the whole thing?
If we make amendment?
On the amendment. Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion about the amendment to the motion? And that's voting BDEF Seashell Gibson's and Seashell Nation Government District. Sorry, Director Lee left out again. All in favor? Opposed? Director Bax opposes. Would you like this recorded? Sure, he says. Excellent. And now, voting on the motion? Any more discussion on the motion? I don't see any hands. Again, voting BDEF Seashell Gibson's, Seashell Nation Government District. All in favor? Any opposed? Director Bax opposes. Would you like that recorded again? Yes. Okay. All right. We got through this. Thank you very much, staff.
Thank you.
Oh. Sorry, Manager Kidway, you might want to hang in there for, you might want to have a seat. We're not quite done. Okay, so I'll be looking for a motion to it. Trying to move this forward. Like a motion to accept the recommendations. The list is on page 74. Anyone would like to make that motion? Director Toss? Oh, Director McMahon, would you like to speak to this?
Well, I just wondered what would be a possible horizon for a pilot project? Because I think I hear appetite here for a pilot project, but we're not ready. And there there are some things that would probably need to be in place, like distinguishing between seniors and students before we could look at a pilot project. So I was just going to ask staff if if, and and, well, you probably don't know this, but I'll ask anyway. You know, if we tried a pilot project, would there be an opportunity for additional funding, like maybe some grant funding?
Thank you for the question. So if the board chooses to pursue free transit for youth, whether that be a pilot project or a permanent project, you can direct us to do so, and we are prepared to launch that program by September 1st, as it says in the report. But we are proposing, the recommendations on page 74, is that you delay that decision on whether you want to pursue the pilot until you have the ability to consider it amongst all the other priorities that will be coming forward for transit, including the expansion, the AOA, and all your other corporate priorities. And that it's this decision is not made in isolation of that. I appreciate that you have recognized the challenge that we may experience between, is it free transit for youth or is it actually services, better services, more frequent services, and what's going to compel ridership and what will be equitable for all of your ridership, in fact? Is something that needs to be deliberated. And we felt that, in all fairness to the board, the best time to do that was during your budget deliberations, when all of your priorities are in front of you. So if you choose at that time to move forward with this initiative, we will be ready to launch that by September 1st of 2024. Thank you.
Director White.
Yeah, I did not intend to shut down discussion of this item just by past putting forward a motion. So I see people leaving already and stuff, but I think there's more to talk about, actually. I appreciate Director McMahon continuing to talk, ask about the pilot. I want to talk more about the pilot. And and I'm interested in, I mean, I know from our level, like, we need hard data and and we need to set numbers in the budget. But when I read that report, like, the the report that Anna prepared, it's clear there's just a lot, there's, students are already getting on for free, teenage teenage years because they need to, in a lot of cases. And I appreciate all the formality of like needing to create new cards and everything, but and I know this is probably just going to get out of the water, but what if we did, what if we just did a pilot where students could show their student cards and see what happened for, like, would would the sky fall? Would we be able to collect data? Yeah. It needs to be more like, yeah, I don't I don't know if the sky would fall, but I'm just putting it out there.
Jim Gangi.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure if that was a question, but I'm going to pretend it was. For students to just give us their card, that's fine, then get on. But a driver can't be tracking that. I don't expect my driver to have a piece of paper beside them. They're concentrating on driving. So in order for us to get the data, we need to have a mechanism to do so, and UMO is our best mechanism. And so as as we have mentioned, we are doing our best regardless of the pilot to try and have UMO help distinguish the demographics that are riding the bus so that we can have that hard data. I'm as excited about that hard data as you are, trust me, because then we can actually start to make decisions about ridership because we know where people are getting on, where they're getting off, what times they're getting on, who's buying bus tickets. We haven't had that. It just simply has not been available to us outside of good old assumptions and Excel spreadsheets. So UMO will help us do that, and it's it's a great tool for that regardless of the pilot. So I think really the decision, and it's a very challenging one, is, is this, is this a way to meet your outcomes in terms of, you know, more ridership, reduced greenhouse gases? Will it will it compel those? I I don't know. It's evident, it would be great for youth. They'd love free transit. I'm not sure who's next in line for free transit after that, but, you know, it's it's really, that's the challenge, is where where do you want to focus your initiatives and priorities on, which, again, is why I felt that the debate was better to have when all of those priorities are in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Gangi. Director Bax.
Thank you, Jim Gangi. You make so much sense. It's, but I'd still like to put forward a motion to reduce the fare for students to $20.
You would like to make that motion right now?
Yeah. If we if we if we wait till we look at the budget, it's going to be delayed until September, and we won't be able to implement it during the beginning of the rollout of UMO. And if we have to wait till September, then we won't have that information until a year from now. If we do this now, and, you know, to hell with everything else, then we'll have the information that we need. And I bet that sales of passes will go up.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order. The director needs a second.
Right, that is correct. Director needs a second.
We can start debating.
So I have a second for motion to reduce fare.
Would you like to repeat your motion?
Second it for, I know there's logistical concerns, but I'll second it.
All right, that is seconded.
Keep speaking.
So I bet that when we reduce the fares to $20, that there's going to be more passes sold, that I think people will more readily, students will more readily buy a pass at the reduced price than the $30 that they're going for now. And I wouldn't be surprised if we actually make more money reducing the fare to $20. And we'll have the information that we need to separate it from the from the seniors' fares. And it's a good compromise. We're not giving it away. We're we're, but we are recognizing the need and the desire of the students for a fair reduction. And to me, I think this is a, this is a win, but if we delay it, then it's going to be another year before we can implement something like this.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Would anyone like to speak to it? Director McMahon?
I appreciate that a year feels a lot longer when you're 16 than it does at my age. But I don't think we should be making these kind of decisions on the fly. It is clear from the report that low-income students who need bus tickets are able to get them and that riders are not refused are not refused by bus drivers when they don't have money. Unfortunately, of course, if they do that, I suppose they don't get counted, so we don't have the statistics again, but never mind, I'm not going to go down that rabbit hole. I personally do not support Director Bax's motion. I do support staff's recommendations, but I would like to have a little bit more discussion on possible pilot projects. Thank you.
Director Stanford.
Thank you, Chair. I also do not support this motion. I know many people don't use that pass. It's it's done on the cash or ticket basis. So I think we will miss a lot, even if it's a lower price. I think we need to look at this as a whole, as a program.
Okay. Thank you, Director Stanford. Any more discussion on the motion? Director Bax.
May I amend the motion to to say that we reduce the fares for the students on a pilot project basis to $20 until September 2024?
Is there a second?
At which point we will consider raising it back up to $30.
Corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair. I would just suggest that you deal with the motion that is active on the floor before a a new motion is raised. It seems like it's a little bit more than an amendment from the original motion.
Okay.
Okay, then. So any more discussion on the motion? I will then call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is defeated. Director Bax, would you like to try again?
I'd like to try again. I put forward a motion to, as a pilot project, to reduce the fares of the student bus passes from January 1st to September 1st, 2024, to $20, at which point we will consider raising it back to $30.
Do I have a second?
We have a information from staff.
Again, I think there might be logistical issues, but I'm going to second.
So we have a second, so it's open for discussion. Director McMahon.
I am going to speculate that this is not on staff's work plan. Perhaps staff would have a comment.
Thank you through the chair. The only comment that I would make, you're correct, this, I'll back up. If the board chooses to move forward with something, we will rearrange our work plan. We do have tentative space to launch a free transit for youth because we're, that might be an outcome of where we go. But I will also remind the the board and the committee that this will have a financial impact that will need to come back through budget. So reducing the fare will reduce our revenue effective January 1, and so there will need to be a financial plan amendment that goes along with that. Thank you.
Director Bax, your hand is up. Did you, yes?
Something I didn't consider, but I'd like to know, how far in advance do you print the bus passes? Because I wouldn't want to, I would time the the pilot project to coincide with the next round of bus pass printings, because I don't want you to print up a bunch of bus passes and then have to throw them out. Do you have any information on that?
Jim Gangi.
Through the chair, we are hoping to launch UMO on January 6, which would delete a printed bus pass. But if Manager Kidway has anything to add to that, I will allow him at this moment.
I would change the motion to read January 6.
I'm not going to second that.
Okay. So, you seconding this amendment?
No.
No? Okay.
I'd like to speak on the, we still have a person to speak to, right?
Okay, Director White.
I'm opposed to this motion, just because I appreciate, what we're trying to do here is, I think the biggest reason for doing this is make sure we can differentiate the passes, and I appreciate staff's already trying to do that. And I worry there could be a side effect of reducing to $20, especially with all the work that we'd have to go through to do it, and the side effect would be, okay, we're done. We reduced the pass instead of, we're not looking at free transit anymore, so we did a reduction. I'm just concerned about that. I still think we need to keep our eye on the goal of, or the request here, at least, of free transit for youth, and I appreciate that staff is looking at finding a way to differentiate the different passes, so we can separate out youth and seniors. And I know, maybe, I mean, maybe they will come back to us and say, we need to do something, make a further decision on the fare or something else in order to do that, but I'm satisfied with that direction at the moment.
So we still have a motion on the floor? Would anyone like to have it read back or ready to vote on it? Ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That is defeated. Okay. Now, we still have some recommendations. Director McMahon?
I really would like to have a further conversation about possible pilot projects, because I have a lot of questions that we do not need to delve into right now. I note, in particular, on page 128, there was something about a portion of the school bus service being contracted out to San Chanco's Transit, and, you know, that's another consideration in all of this. So I would like to have a future discussion about possible pilot projects and also possible partners in a pilot project, because it'd be really important to involve the school district and hopefully the students. So, in the meantime, however, I would really like to move the recommendations on page 74.
Moved, seconded. Any more discussion about this motion? Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. All right. Wonderful. So, would you like to speak? Or, you're good? Okay, great. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're moving on. Thank you, thank you. And we're moving on to item number six, Annex F, pages 137 to 149. It is corporate greenhouse gas emissions target policy, target setting. We have Manager of Sustainable Development, Rafael Shea, here. Would you like to introduce this report?
Thank you, Chair. This has been in the works for a long time, and I want to express my thanks to the amount of energy spent on it by several staff. There was a lot of consideration about the scale of the challenges associated with each target options, and with that came the feasibility and resources required to get us there. Staff attempted to make these and other implications as explicit as possible. However, not all implications of specific targets are in front of you. That's in part because there's so many interdependencies and decision points that lie ahead that will both influence and be influenced by targets. This is why the targets are helpful. They will help us guide what should be brought forward for consideration and the analysis that informs decision-making. There's a lot of constraints that influence the ability to meet these targets. Financial constraints are a notable one. Other examples are the zero emission vehicles depend on a support infrastructure and systems that are not in place and will require implementation of recommendations from the fleet strategy, scheduled to be completed later in 2024, as well as other future board decisions. There's also implications of these targets. They include defining energy efficiency equipment as critical components of capital plans, reworking those plans likely over several iterations. They also include increasing capacity in various departments to undertake low-carbon electrification projects. And energy efficiency projects as well also require capacity, although to a lesser extent. Another implication is optimizing facility energy performance requires increasing facility maintenance capacity. So as one of the next steps, the targets that the board selects will be integrated into future staff analysis and could become a component of the climate lens. Thank you very much, and staff, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Manager Shea. I see a hand up. Director McMahon?
Yes, while my heart longs for super aggressive targets, I appreciate the complexity of the situation. Plus, we can always, you know, a couple of years down the road, make our goals more ambitious when we have more information, or perhaps new programs or technologies become available to us. It's better to get more ambitious than have to set a goal and then not meet it, which I think would be awkward. But the other thing I note, on page, what am I on? Page 149, our landfill emissions are so big compared to everything else that we do, that if we reduce our landfill emissions by 10%, we do more than with everything else that we're talking about here. So I think this is a reasonable compromise and a reasonable path to go forward. And at a future date, I'd really like to hear about what, if anything, we could do to reduce our landfill emissions, so, thank you.
Did not hear a question there, but great comments. Excellent. Would anyone else? No? Director Ingster?
Yeah, thank you. I like the aggressive targets as well, and I'll continue to ask for them. Sadly, though, what we've seen at other levels of government and even at our levels is that the aggressive targets that have been presented over the last number of years in reaction to the climate changes have been, not been met, and we're dealing with issues at the provincial level now where the three parties are, even the party in power is not sure how to meet the targets that are out there. So I think we just need at the local, need at the local government level to continue to try to, through modeling to these other levels of government, to try to push our targets, just to give a demonstration of what needs to be done in terms of ambition. A question I had, and it's in the report through you, Chair, to staff, is I was, and the landfill was mentioned, but I was standing near the aquatic center yesterday, and I saw a lot of steam or smoke coming out of the roof. I'm not suggesting that it was a fire. What I'm saying is that obviously that's an indication of off-gassing from energy use. So I'm identifying, once again, the recreational facilities as, how do we make adjustments in those buildings? Is it possible to make meaningful adjustments considering what we're doing in those buildings to meet our targets? Those are my, that's a big challenge to me because of what we're doing in those buildings. We're heating or we're cooling. Those are the huge users of energy, and so how we react to that, what systems we can put in place, will be an indication of not only our commitment, but what kind of technology we're able to come up with in order to meet those concerns and demands. So just a question through to you, to staff. I know it's a tough one, but I just, it's, those are big energy users. Thanks.
I believe this was covered in the report, but if staff would like to speak to it, be happy to hear any comments?
Yeah, there are some budget proposals coming to Budget 2024 that will speak to some, I think, 2024 decision points that can reduce emissions materially by about 15% at SAC, is a staff estimate. There's other broader discussions that are scheduled for the future, around the future of the rec centers, and there's certainly some opportunities around co-locating facilities to have some more heat recovery, for example. There's a variety of technologies out there that are at our disposal, and we've completed feasibility studies that looked at low-carbon electrification of the rec centers, all the fossil fuel-using equipment, so we have an idea of what those are. And then we've also done some energy efficiency studies for more efficient natural gas options at some of those facilities. So as we move forward with specific targets, staff will be able to create a greater refined analysis of what could be brought forward for consideration on the most optimal path to meet the set targets.
Thank you. Excellent. Director White?
Just, thank you. I just want to comment that although the news is not all good and that we have a lot of work to do, I'm really excited about seeing this report and the targets, because it's so important that we're doing this work. And it is concerning to me, though, that we aren't, it's not something that's always, that we're talking a lot about, you know, in this past year as a board, at least. And I'd like to float an idea out, it's not in response to this report, but to the board, to staff, because I'm wondering if it might be something that, I mean, as something to consider in future, but far be it from me to, I'm kind of the last person that would suggest another committee, but I'd be really interested in the board considering an advisory committee on climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, because there are so many people in our community who not only have professional expertise, but do a lot of constant research on these topics, and could be a helpful discussion to keep going. It's something that I've been hoping to do in Gibson's, but once I started to think about it, I thought, this is really a regional, like, this is an issue that we need to engage people from the entire coast to get together and consider and engage at a regional level. And if there's anything where we could really have a helpful advisory committee that would help inform the board and inform staff on some of the specifics of the professional expertise on some of these challenges we have, and also just the bigger picture of concerns about climate change, I think this would be a worthwhile pursuit.
Thank you for that. That's a very great idea. Director McMahon?
I previously neglected to move the recommendations on page 137.
Seconded, and Director Ingster had his hand up as well?
Yeah, thank you. We do have a regional accessibility committee, which came from community-based committees such as that, like Seashells, so I see a regional committee as a good idea. I mean, if Director White's going to propose yet another committee, I'm like thinking, wow, maybe this is a good idea, if Director White's going to propose it. So I think that, I think that we should give some consideration to that. We don't talk enough at this board table about climate change because of some of our other challenges, but we, our planet doesn't have much time left. We need to talk about it. We need to be serious about climate change.
Thank you, Director Ingster. Very much appreciate that. Are the hands I'm seeing residual, or? Oh, Director McMahon?
Yes, having gotten sidetracked into committees, of course, it is important. I know that other communities have climate action committees, and they have had different structures and they have had different degrees of success, you might say. I think some of them have been very successful and some have not. So I don't know if Director White wants to direct staff to come forward with some options for a committee and its structure, but in the meantime, we actually have a motion on the floor.
That is correct. And it is voting all directors this time. Any more discussion? We're all ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay. Moving on to item seven, Annex G, pages 150 to 152, 2024 insurance renewals. Would, Andy, I saw Manager Crop, and not anymore.
Ben, were you moving it?
Oh, Manager Crop is here. Would you like to introduce this report for us?
My glasses on, I can see. Thank you. So this is our annual renewal of our insurance for our property and liability. One of the increases, you'll see that there is increases, our insurance rate has actually remained relatively the same on what they charge, but our statement of values, the value of our property, we have, like, the Church Roadwell and things like that, that have actually increased it. So the insurance market, I'm hoping, is starting to steady a bit and not have huge increases that we've seen over the last few years. So I'm happy to ask any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Crop. Director Toss?
Thank you, Chair. Never happy to pay more in insurance costs, but do recognize that it's something that we need, and at least the increase is for good reason. So I'm going to move the recommendations as presented on page 150.
And that is seconded. Thank you. Any more discussion? Director Stanford?
Through the chair. This may be a little unfair, but where do docs fit into this insurance? And if I don't, if you don't have that number off the top of your head, then how would I be able to find it?
Manager Crop, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you for the question. They're a part of our statement of values. So what the statement of values is, is all our assets that are over our deductible, because I'm not going to ensure things less than are deductible, and that includes the docs and the wharves and those type of things.
Thank you very much. And we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, Annex H, pages 153 to 155, recreation software information report. Do we have a manager of recreation services?
Chair, can we please have someone promote Manager Don in the meeting, I believe is in the gallery?
He is here. All right. Manager Don, thank you very much. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I think this report's relatively self-explanatory, so I'll just open it up for any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Directors, any questions? Director McMahon?
My very limited experience of our current recreation software is that it's clunky, so I could see that we could benefit from new software. I'm just wondering if, when we do this, when we upgrade our software, do we ever look at the impact? Like, has it saved us resources? Or have we saved time that we're able to direct to other activities? Just curious.
Manager Don, would you like to speak to this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the question. So yes, we have identified many business needs as part of our current software and the need for transitioning. And part of the review, once we launch it, would be to kind of track the improvements, what the differences are, and we also are kind of looking ahead to the budget and making sure we stay within that and save annually with the new system. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Toss?
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually in a similar vein, but coming at it from the upfront side of things. In my reading of this report, it says that we may transition to new software, but also really that we may not end up transitioning to new software. And so I'm wondering- And so I'm wondering, when we look at the options that come back from vendors, is the consideration of the effort to make that transition a part of our assessment? Because we know that any transition to new software is going to take time, money, staff, resources. Thank you.
Good question. Manager Dawn, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the question. Yes, so we put in the report that we may be transitioning to a new software because we are in the middle of the procurement process and we are, you know, there could be the potential for the current vendor to have a submission as well, which would potentially involve us adjusting our current process with that vendor. So that's why we put the "may" in there. And then as far as staff training and kind of everything that goes into it, it would be a massive undertaking and we would look to those submissions to build that future award report for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion? Oh, it's our research report, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, we're good then. Oh, that was easy. Too easy. Awesome. Okay, and next one, last one. Budget project status report update, annex I, pages 156 to 177. Do we have an introduction or are we just jumping right into questions? CEO McKinley?
Thank you. No specific introduction, but the senior leadership team is standing by to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Director McMahon?
Sure, there were one or two things that kind of, you know, I wanted to just grumble about, like the power to the landfill, which seems to be taking forever for reasons that are not clear to me, but are probably outside of our control. However, on page 169, line 131, it says that Wood Creek Park was pushed back nearly seven months. And I just wanted to see if there is a little clarification on that. I also always have trouble with pushed back and pushed forward because people seem to use those terms interchangeably. So I just, does this mean we're, it's going to take seven months longer?
Would staff like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you. Pushed back, in this case, means delayed. And the rationale behind it was we're exploring options to refine our, to reduce the ultimate need to replace the sand filter. Because we, staff and our consultant, we were discussing options that might not require the replacement of the sand filter, which is the most expensive part of this project. And we confirmed that unfortunately, we still have to replace part of the sand filter and some additional work is still required on the infrastructure itself. So yes, there was a delay, but ultimately that delay will result in a more optimized and most likely also cheaper insulation than initially was considered. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Director Stamford?
Thank you. Just a brief clarification, line 155, it's a small amount of money, but it's to do with the Connected Coast feasibility study. It seems to me that the marine portion of this is moving ahead very quickly. It seemed to be getting updates, at least through the islands, of work happening early next year. If somebody could remind me exactly what this feasibility study is for, is it for the land portion that we're looking for service function? Thank you.
Thank you, CEO McKinley.
Thank you for the question through the chair. The feasibility study is actually for the portion of this project that's completely unrelated to any of the works associated with the grant. So another portion of this project is envisioned that at some point in the future, when the project is complete and the residents are paying for the service to the service provider, there's an opportunity through a partnership with the Sunshine Coast Regional District to receive a portion of the profits back as a dividend. We don't currently have a service to accept said funds in the future, should they materialize. And so like other regional districts that have participated in the Connected Coast, we need to conduct a feasibility study to see if an existing service that we already have could be amended or expanded, or if we need to develop a new service that could receive said funds, should we be fortunate enough to be in a place to get them.
Wow, thank you very much. Everything's so easy in regional districts. Director McMahon, did you have another question?
I did. Line 169, we are starting off an extreme heat response plan, which is great. Just wondering if this is going to be referred to our new accessibility advisory committee for them to weigh in on this, since they are some of the most vulnerable people.
GM Hall, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you for the question. Knowing the status of that committee as brand new and not having all the mechanics of their scope and plan necessarily solid, yet staff can't say that that has been definitely confirmed, but sounds like an appropriate use of that tool. So thanks for the highlight. Staff hear it. Thanks.
Thank you, GM Hall. Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. On line 19, I noticed that the procurement of the snow removal and ice control equipment's not going to be done until the end of December. What happens if it snows before that?
GM Gangyo?
Thank you, Chair. We have all the pieces of equipment in place and are currently actually already activating ice control. So I think December is complete date, just in terms of all the invoicing coming in and wrapping up the purchases in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Director Lee, is your hand?
Yes, I do.
One more?
I'm just trying to find the line here. Line 35. It's the, looks like we can start on Baker's Beach, according to this report. I was just wondering if I have that right.
GM Gangyo?
Thank you, through the chair. We did do a preliminary, a PFR, and it came back and we have significantly more in-depth archaeological work that needs to be done that is not moving forward at this point due to lack of budget at this current time. Thank you.
Thank you. One more?
So we have to do a more in-depth study. Is that funded? Will it be happening, is that happening now or will it be in the new year?
Thank you and thank you for the question. A couple of years ago, we brought forward a budget request to have some budget embedded into our ongoing operating budget for archaeological studies. I'm not sure where this particular initiative sits in the priority queue for the use of those funds in 2024. I'll have to check with our parks manager. It's a very small amount and we have a lot of different projects that require archaeological work, so I'll have to check into where it sits in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Stamford?
On line 20, this is a question for GM Gangyo, is, there's a note stating that next steps should be determined for fixing the piles, pylons for Keats Landing Dock. And what I just need clarification for is next steps to be determined per staff should be complete by end of 2023. Is that the work will be finished by the end of 2023 or is that the steps will be determined by then?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the question. We know the work will definitely not be completed by 2023. The work has not even been initiated, initiated other than to have closure for vehicular access. We have yet to determine next steps. We do have a POMO meeting, I believe, coming up, which was one of the things that we wanted to have occur first, so we can discuss this with our POMO representatives. And then we'll be looking at what our options are and coming back to the board sometime in the new year to talk about next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Lee?
I've got all the way down to line 37 now. It's the Suncoast Trail Phase Two. It appears that we're not going to do that section of Suncoaster Trail, which kind of surprised me. Are we not looking to expand the Suncoaster Trail any further then because of this?
Staff?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the question. If I believe that this particular project is about, is not about expanding or new sections of trail. This is about decommissioning a steep fall trail line, rerouting a sustainable grade switchback and some boardwalk. And it was going to be done along with a community partner and that community partner has identified some capacity challenges and that's why it hasn't progressed any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bax?
Yes, I have a question about, in the completed projects on line 41, there's, you have the roof for the training structure at the Roberts Creek Fire Department marked as completed when it is not completed. It says that it could be Q4, Q3. It's my understanding that there's an archaeological assessment that needs to be completed on this project. Can you give me any updates?
Thanks for the question. Firstly, the project is obviously not complete, so I'll have to look into whether it's a mistake that it is included there. And I can't offer any update beyond what's provided in the document at this time, but we'll follow up on the question. Thank you.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Director Lee?
On line 38, it mentions that in September, we were expecting a report in Q4 on the boat ramp repairs for Cooper's Green. And it says no change from September on November 14th. Will we be getting that report before the end of this year or will that be sliding into next year?
GM Gangyo?
Thank you and thank you for the question. We took the opportunity, we had a request for proposals go out where we were setting up service agreements for some of our ports and engineering services that might be required so that we have a service provider that we have an agreement with. And we took the opportunity to combine that with some, a couple of our ramps. And so that was an efficiency that we found, but that process obviously took more time than originally anticipated. So I believe that agreement has been signed and the work has been commissioned. I don't know when to expect it to be done, but it is underway. Thank you.
That's good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bax, is your hand residual?
No, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Also, in the completed pages on 174, line 16, I was wondering where I could find more information on this particular public consultation, the Cliff Gilker planning. Is there, is there a specific place I can look? Is it under Parks in, on our webpage or is there, where can I find more information on this particular portfolio?
Staff?
Thank you and thank you for the question. Though, there's two projects that were actually commissioned. Gosh, when did those get going? I think in the fall. That's for Cliff Gilker Park Recovery Planning for the flood event, as well as Chaster Creek Bridge Pedestrian Crossing, or just, I always get that wrong. It's the bridge down by Chaster House. And so I believe that that, the planning is done, but that report has not come back to the board yet. So that is anticipated to come back to the board in Q1 with options on how we might move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer.
Great. Director Lee?
Yes, I'm on line 79, which talks about the North Pender Harbor Water Service Garden Bay Treatment Plant Improvements, preliminary pre-design work. I thought we had had that done and we were ready for a report. Do I, am I incorrect there?
Chairman Rosenbaum, yeah?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. There's a report to the board coming in one of the upcoming COW meetings, committee meetings with the results of this project.
Ah, great. Thank you.
Director Bax, did you have another question? Good? Okay. Director Lee?
I think I'm done, but just give me a sec here.
Going once.
I got to say, first off, that I was very happy with the reports. They're getting very good and answered most of my questions. And that is all the questions I have. Thank you.
Great. Awesome. I see no further hands and we have no communications, no new business. We will be going in camera shortly, but before we do, because it's a special day, if there are any questions from the public, we will be taking them now. I don't see anyone in the gallery. Anyone online? I do not see any hands up. So we will be going in camera. Can I get a motion that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with Section 91 C and K of the community charter? Moved, seconded, all in favor? That carries. We'll see you on the other side. Moved, seconded, all in favor? That carries. We'll see you on the other side.